Okay, and good day to everyone. And I'm going to try something a little bit different today. And I hope that it helps you, but this is not a a session, a podcast, or whatever you want to call it. I decided that I was going to video one of my, what I would call my study sessions. It's the way I do when I study. And I kind of wanted to do this for two reasons because it, when I do study, I exercise. And it helps me to think when I'm doing a lot of different things and thinking about the things I'm reading and and the things that we've talked on and maybe the things over the weekend. And so that's one of the reasons I kind of do these sessions. And I normally just do them me. But I thought I would put one out and then if everybody says, hey, Don, I really like that and you can even exercise along with me, you know? And, but I am going to be talking. I read things and then I think about it and I talk about it off my head and off my thinking. So it's not all perfect. But maybe it'll give you some thoughts. Some of you that are ministers, some of you brothers and sisters out there, when you're dealing with people every day of your life, if it can give you a little bit of a thought it to help you along, I would be real happy with that too. So the first reason is just, I want to put one out and see maybe if you want me to do more because I will do my study sessions. It doesn't matter to me. And then of course, the second thing is it kind of knocks two things out with one stone. And it helps you maybe catch an idea of where I'm headed for the next session or and on down the line. Each time we done, I do my study sessions, I kind of take the things that I'm studying on and I set them up for one of the podcasts fellowships. So you know, you watch these and then you kind of know where I'm headed with things. So, but I wanted to take the time and I'm just going to start doing some of my exercises. A lot of my exercises are therapeutic. They're not heavy lifting and those kinds of things. But they help me for when I'm getting ready to sleep. And I usually do these in the evening times. My study sessions either early mornings, 4:30, 5:00, 6 o'clock, or late evenings, you know, 9:00, 10:00 and get ready for, you know? So these are therapeutic type, you know, it gets the blood flowing. I don't know if you're my age and you can get the flood, blood flowing out to your extremities, you know, your fingers and your toes and feet and ears and the nose. And when you get outside, it certainly does help. And it helps you be able to sleep so you're not hurting also. But I was thinking while I'm doing some of this, over the weekend, I had listened to a brother, excellent messages on the rapture. And I had told Brother Jerry that maybe my next message at his place, which I think is November 1st or 2nd, whatever that Sunday is, he had asked me to speak again. And so I told him I would. And I said, I may speak on the rapture. Well, the brother came and he spoke on the rapture, really brought out some great things. The reason for the rapture, Brother Benjamin Norrod. And so I really enjoyed it. And I was thinking about some of the things that that was said by Brother Branham. And he told us that the rapture was a process, a revelation. And he said that, this is in the first seal. He makes a clear statement. He says, now what happens? Paragraph 63, first seal. Now what happens is as we go along here, here is the plan of it. So Brother Branham is going to lay a plan out of what was to go on. And he says, here's the plan of it. He says, the first thing happens, there is an announcement in the heavens first. Of course, we know the announcement in the heavens. We know the 62 alignment. We know all those things and we know the 2002 alignment. We know that the announcement in the, in the church of Malachi 4, Revelations 10, all kinds of things. So there's an announcement first in the heavens. What happens? A seal is opened. So an announcement comes and a seal is opened. And so what is, he says, what is that? You know, a lot of people, they don't understand what a seal is. Brother Branham said, what is that? Okay, what happens? What is that? A mystery is unfolded. So a seal being opened is a mystery unfolding. Okay, so he's very clear about that. Now see, and when a mystery unfolds, then a trumpet sounds. So what's he doing? To me, he's going to go through a process here of how the Lord brings out the rapture. So an announcement, announcement is the word from heaven. Here comes an announcement. And then a seal opens or a mystery is unfolded. A mystery, we know what that is. It's the nature of Christ, the mystery of Christ. So it's unfolded and then what happens next? Brother Branham said, a trumpet's open and sounds. Then he says, what's that? It declares a war. A plague falls and a church age opens. So we see this now. He goes on here. He's, he's explaining all this to us. He's revealing it to us. He's helping us understand it. And he says, now what is the war part? So I wanted to get across to you something here, maybe where we're headed. He says, what is the war part? We think of wars as World War I, World War II, World War III might be coming up, all the wars, the Koreans and the paroxys and the Vietnamese and the Afghans. And we, when he says a war is, a trumpet opens. And he says, what is this? It's, it's the war part. He's not talking about secular wars. Talking about wars in the, in the, in the, in the person, in the, in the church, if you want to call it a church. Spiritual wars, all these wars out here, wars and rumors of wars and all that. Those are all types, shadows, symbols. Don't worry about them. The spiritual warfare is in the church, in the mind of man, in the, in the church, in the people. This war, an announcement, prophet speaks a word. A seal breaks, a nature of Christ comes down or descends into the earth. That nature begins to spread itself as the seal opens. And then the next thing that happens, a trumpet sounds. There's, there's, there's a, a trumpet is, is a, denotes war. And, and, and he says, when this trumpet sounds, then he says, the angel of the church catches the mystery. The seal is unfolded. And then the angel of the church, let's just take the first church age, Paul caught the mystery. And when he caught the mystery, Paul declared, the mystery was, we're no longer in Moses' day. The mystery was, we're coming out of something and we're not just coming out of something. We're going into something. And this mystery gets caught by the messenger. And then he says, not yet fully revealed. But when he does, he catches the mystery of God and then he goes forth in that mystery of Christ. The people, after the mystery has been given to them, see the mystery, the names on the book, whatever you want to call it, it's a mystery of Christ. It's not a bunch of names on the book. It's a nature of Christ on the book. And then what happens? That mystery goes forth, angel catches it. He begins to bring it to the people and the people are drawn to the mystery or drawn to their name for their age, for their time. Not Don Parnell, not George Washington, not whoever it might be. They're drawn to the name of Christ or the nature of Christ for that, that time. So we see this now. The reason I'm going through this and I'm studying this, I'm thinking about it because I'm going to read you something here in just a second. He says, now look, not fully yet revealed. But when he does, he catches the mystery of God. Then he goes forth in the people after the mystery's been given to them, goes forth to the people. What does he do out there? He begins to proclaim the message, bring the nature. And when it does, it brings a spiritual war. And then God takes his messenger. Okay, so we see an announcement, the messenger speaking, coming from heaven. Then we see this seal unfold, the mystery of God goes into the earth, the mystery of Christ, angel picks it up, he preaches it, the people catch it. They hear it, they believe it, they're drawn to it. And then he says, the next thing that happens, the angel goes off the scene. So we see this now, when the angel goes off the scene, he says, what does he do out there? He begins to proclaim that message. And then God takes the messenger with the elect of the age and lays them away asleep. Malachi 4, back to the ashes. They go into the theophonic dimension, lays them away asleep. And then he drops a plague upon them who rejected it, a temporary judgment. And then after that is over, then it goes on. They denominate, they bring in denominations. They start off with all this man's work, like of Wesley and all the rest of them. And then it gets all in a squabble again. Everybody's fussing over what the messenger said, over what so-and-so said. The messenger's right-hand man, the guy that was in, wrote everything down for him. Everybody gets all squabbled up and they, they, they go in. It's, it's all underneath that plague. The elect's already been sealed. The elect is already caught away, not necessarily caught up in the air somewhere, but they've gone to sleep, their body, they, they have gone back into the ashes and they've gone to the sixth dimension. And then there's those of us who are alive and remain and we're caught up. We're not a part of that judgment. That's the way that I'm looking at it. That's the way I'm seeing it. What William Branham just described right here to us is the rapture. The revelation, the rapture is a revelation. Brother Ben had a great way of bringing it. It was beautiful and it kind of opened my mind up to some of these things. Now let's watch him. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking on this and I really believe that there's got something here for us. He says, after that's over, they go on, they denominate things. And then an announcement is made in heaven. What are we doing? A second church age, a third church age, a fourth church age, fifth, sixth, seventh church age. And it's the same cycle and it's going over and over again. And what is the cycle? We say, we're waiting on the rapture. We've had seven cycles of the rapture. That's, that is the rapture right there. We just, we just read it in a nutshell. Now it's, it's, it's a whole lot of years. It ain't a paragraph. It's a whole lot of years. But in a book, we just read the rapture. And he says, what happens? He says, another mystery comes forth, another messenger arrives on the earth, a church age starts, there's an announcement, then the trumpet sounds after the mystery is unfolded, declares war. Then what happens? Finally, they get all messed up, but they get caught away. And then when he is led away, the messenger goes, the people go back to the earth, the ashes under the souls of the feet, Malachi 4. And they go into the dimensions where they belong. And some are remain and caught up. And they're the ones that are carrying it on to the next age. And that's us right now. We come through into this seventh age. So I'm looking at this. And I'm thinking about, and I'm, I'm doing a lot of leg stretches while I'm here. And I hope you, I know you probably can't see that. But it's stretching because I need those legs to stretch so that they don't hurt at night. And I stretch them out pretty good. And you should do the same for yourself. But he says now, then he goes on to another age. And it just continues. He says, until, until it comes to the last messenger, the last angel. Now he has no certain mystery. This last angel, when it comes to the last angel, everything changes. It, it, it's not the same. It's all of those seven ages, all of those raptures, all of those church ages. Every one of those messages to me, when I'm looking at it, was a rest to the people. He gave them a miniature rapture. He gave them a rest. He put their bodies away back into the earth. He took them into the dimensions and he brought a plague. And the plague was to, to quill or kill or purge or stop that age and bring on a new age. That's what plagues are for, that's what judgments are for. To stop an old age and bring on a new age. That's, that's my thought on it. And so at this last angel, he gathers up all that's been lost in them other ages. Yes, all that's been lost in them other ages. All of the hidden things, all of the lost things, all of the, the, the concepts, all of the doctrines, all of the things that were lost down through the ages that were brought to us in Christ and in the Alpha Age before the church ages began. There's a lot of things lost in there. There were iniquities of every age. There were antichrists, there were this and that and the other. And a lot of things were lost. And this messenger, this last messenger is to bring on this healing or bring back all of those hidden and lost things. And I believe he did that. I believe that the seventh messenger was a messenger that he came on the scene for the Pentecostal church age. Ninety percent of his message, if you just look at the age he lived in, was to the Pentecost. And then what happened about 1956, 50 years into Pentecost, from 1906 to 56, the Jubilee came and Elijah the prophet stepped on the scene from 56 to 63 and brought all of those lost and hidden things. This is just my thinking, the way I see this happening. We're at the end of an age, but we're not at the end of the first age, second age, third. They all ended the same. They ran the recycle, they ran the recycle, they ran. But this is not a recycle. This is something totally different. And I'm not sure, in my mind, when I'm working on these sessions and I'm reading the Bible and I'm reading these things and I'm reading all kinds of historians at times, and I'll do some of that. I'm not sure what the plan of it is. He said, here's the plan of it for the seven ages. But he said, then at the seventh messenger, the whole thing changes when it comes to him. And he gathers up everything. So we have to say, in my mind, we have to say, he, he brought all of that fruit to the, to the ages, to, to fruition, I guess, is the best way to put it. I'm just thinking a minute. He brought it to fruition. He brought it to its fullness. He brought it to a dispensation where everything that was manifested through there comes over here. And it's that beautiful tree by the rivers of water that can't be moved. It's just perfect. Now, what is the plan? He talks about it here just a little bit. He says, he has no certain mystery. If you want to read it, Revelations 10 and 1 through 7, through 4, you'll get it. All right. Takes the book, the seals, breaks them and shows the seventh angel for this alone. The mysteries of God is the mystery of the seventh angel. Now, we just come through the church ages. What did he say? We just came through the church ages. They're done. We came through the church ages with even history. And to prove that, and it is the angel's message of the seventh church. It's in the breach. He said it very clearly. He said, the seventh angel's message comes forth and we have it in tape and book form. The seventh angel brought his message, it's done. So we see this now, but here's a new plan. I'm not, I'm not going to try and put out something and guess on the new plan. I'm just telling you, we stepped into an abstract age. The old plan of the Old Testament does not work. The old plan of the New Testament does not work. We come out of the seals, we close the old and new, we close the first and second. We opened up a whole nother age. And it's different. If you try to work it out of church age thinking, church age framework, it's not going to work. You know what you're going to do? You're going to set up man. That's what those were for. It was to set a man up, bring a message, and then all the people fall into that message. But that's not, that's not what's today. Today is different. Today is not church ages. Church means called out. See, we were called out. Remember, I'm thinking on things. There was two parts to redemption. He said, one part was being called out of something. Yeah, Israel called out of Egypt. Paul called Israel out of Moses. And William Branham called the bride out of the church ages. Says, we're called out, we're called out, we're called out. But putting all, putting all that in there, let's also say this. There's two parts of redemption. There's a being called out and a called into. What are we being called into? He says now, it is the angel's message of the seventh church. It brings Revelations 10, 1 to 7. Now remember, in the days of the seventh angel, his sounding forth, blasting forth, the gospel trumpet, he is to finish all the mysteries of God. And we know that in the message, what is the attraction on the mountain? He makes that statement, Revelations 10, 7 was prophecy. Now it's history. So all that's finished, all that's finished. And where are we going from here? This, this is, this is my thinking. This is my, we're being raptured. The rapture hasn't finished. A lot of people say, the rapture's over. No, we've been raptured. But rapture, if you just look it up, Brother Ben done a great job on it. He said, the rapture is a revelation. You can't put a period on revelation. You can't put an end on revelation. Many people want to, but you can't do it. William Branham did not end the revelation. Jesus Christ did not end the revelation. When we're called out of something and then called into something, think about Egypt, think about Israel being called out of Egypt into Canaanland. It's a long process. But everything changed when they entered Canaanland. We know that. I won't go into that now. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about my types for a minute. When Paul caught the revelation in Acts, the ninth chapter, Pentecost had already happened. But Paul was the guy, he was the apostle to call them into. They had been called out by Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ called them out of the Mosaic law and said, go, go to Jerusalem and stay there until you be endowed or endowed with power from God. You just came out of something. Now I must go away. That was his words, so that I can come back again and we'll go into something. Well, Pentecost happened. And then, as I'm thinking on it, Acts, the ninth chapter, although Pentecost had happened and although they were having the changes taking place, Paul was the keystone to the entire change. And he called them out of the Mosaic law, even confronting Peter and Demas and Barnabas and many men. And Paul said, after 14 years, I went up to Jerusalem and these men who had walked their whole lives with Jesus never taught me anything. I caught it on the revelation of Jesus Christ. So we see this now. Paul brought them out. Moses brought them out of Egypt. Joshua took them in. Jesus brought them out of that old creation. Paul took them in to the church ages. William Branham called them out of the church ages. Now what are we calling them into? Are we the Joshua? Are we the Elisha? Are we the, are, are we the, the ones who are calling people into something? And what are we calling them into? The fullness of the Word? The prophet said, there's four life messengers that brought life into us, and that was justification, sanctification, baptism of the Holy Ghost, full Word. Those four things brought life. He said, there's four death messengers. You know what they are? The four horse riders. So we see this going on. Where are we going into? Says, just like here come forth in the early church. We'll get it after a while, a doctrine. Then it become a, a saying. Then it become a statute. Then it become a church. Then it went into the dark ages. We don't want to go there anymore. I, I, I don't want another church age. I don't want to lead the people into a bunch of doctrines. Jesus said, beware of the doctrines of the Pharisees. I don't want to lead them into, into looking to man. I know men are great and I know they're helps, they're facilitators, they're helpers. They're, they're all of these things. And I know that the, the, the ministry, there are nine spiritual gifts. And there is a ministry, apostles, prophets, evangelists, teachers and pastors. I know all that and I don't want to take away from that. I don't want to try to act like that doesn't exist. I don't want to try to act like that doesn't exist, but it's got to change. Where are we headed with it? How do we move the people into a participation where that they are a part of all these things, rather than just waiting on some man to say it, and then do the best they can? Where, where do we, where do we go from here? It's not another Pentecostal age. It's not any of those things. And I want to, I want to say with all my heart, that I'm not trying to make anything new. I'm just saying, we're already in an abstract age. Nothing has been boom manifested on, on earth that is a framework for this brand new world. Parts of it we look at, but how do we get the, how do we get the finished product over the line? It's fourth down, and seconds to go, and we got to get that football across the line. It's, it's a fourth quarter, and we're down by two, and we got one three-point shot to cross that finish line, to break into a new day, a new understanding. I'm just using those things as, as metaphors. Where do we go? How do we set up? What, I, I, I'm going to say this. Being out here on my own for nine years, and holding a, a ministry on digital, on internet, on ether waves, is wonderful, and I'm going to continue doing that. But we need fellowship. We need to touch one another. We need to sit face to face, and we need to, we need to sort things out over, over coffee, over exercising, over thoughts, over quotes in scriptures, over things that, that maybe are the truth, but aren't in the message, in the Bible. They're truths. There's truths out there that can help us, and help us to do what we're supposed to do, and that is to bring on a brand new world. I see it happening in the political world. Just touching my toes and things for a minute. I see it happening in the political world. I see it happening in the, in the religious world. I see all of these things happening, and they're coming closer, certainly in the scientific world, and in the theological world, psychological world. It is just amazing where they are going. And we have come into this great day, and those seals open, and we've been 60 years, 60 years since 1963. 62 years, actually. And I do believe we have, we have moved the gauge somewhat. We've caused the pendulum to swing somewhat. I agree with all that. But are we going? You know, we've got, you say, Brother Parnell, we've had our body change. I've taught and taught and taught that. But listen to me, we've had our final body change, and there's got to be a revelation to take us into our final body change. You say, we've had a resurrection of the dead. Of course, we've had a resurrection of the dead. Anybody that would think that we haven't, they have no understanding at all of where we're at, the message or anything else. But we haven't had the final resurrection, that final resurrection where that everything about us changes, and we're in that 20-year-old body, and we're moving around, and we're enjoying, and we're enjoying the earth in a way we've never enjoyed it, and we're able to, like, like Adam could do, move those trees and everything else, and move them here and move them there, the vision I had, the visitation. We're doing it spiritually. We're breaking into those things. But there's got to come some way, somehow, in this new world, in this world after the seals, where physical and spiritual connect up. Where physical and spiritual connect up, and it begins to break in the physical realms, the things that we are looking at, in the spiritual realms. What's the reason for the rapture? It's not to get out of here. The rapture's not to, oh my God, I'm scared, and, and it's going to fall apart any minute, and Lord, please, that's not it. The rapture is a revelation of how we walk through the fiery furnace, and we come out without the smell of smoke on us. The rapture is how we stepped into an ark. You know, those fellows, they, they went into that fire, and they were called out. And they were called into Christ. They went into the ark, and they were called out, and they were called back into the world. How do we go back into the world in this day, from Sunset Mountain? What are we doing? What's the plan for setting up the kingdom? I can't make that plan. I can look at Scripture, I can look at historians, I can look at, I can look at theologians, I can listen to science, I can pull it all together, and I can, I can intellectually stand here, studying and looking at things, and say to you, this is what it's going to be. Okay? Now how do I get it from here, this, this mouse saying it, and here? This earth manifesting it? There's where I'm at. That's my studies, that's, that's what I'm looking at. In your, in your assemblies, I don't have a thing against assemblies. But listen, we've done them the same way, the same old Pentecostal way, for years and years and years and years and years. How do we get the people? Singing is great, I love it, it brings me into the Spirit. Worship is great, I love it, it brings me into the Spirit. But how do we get the people participating in the revelation? How do I get the people to where, when they walk out the back door, and they go back to work, that that revelation is so embedded in them that they actually manifest it? Nothing deters them from it. Everyone they meet, everything they meet, every place they meet, they know that they are Jesus Christ, they are the Christ, and they are meeting this person for the first or the last time for the reason of the new earth, the new world, and how to establish that kingdom. How do we get them to that point? Do we get them more communicative in the, in the fellowships? When I say communicative, you know, questions, answers, comments? I'm not talking about testimonies, testimonies are wonderful, you know? Had a, had a hard time at work today, and the Lord took me through it, and my dog got sick, and the Lord healed it, and this. That's, that is wonderful. That, that's wonderful. But I'm talking about into the revelation of Jesus Christ. I was thinking on this today, and this is what the Lord showed me about the rapture. Or this is what I was thinking about on the rapture. What do you think? This is what I was thinking about on the resurrection of the dead. You tell me your thoughts on it. What do, you know, start having communication with people, with your assemblies, and communicate with them so that when they walk out, they haven't been dictated to, they haven't been yelled at, but they've been made to think. They've been made to think about the age they're in, and what they are going to say. You know, I was saying to one of the brothers today, a couple of very good men. I said, maybe when we're preaching, we ought to stop once in a while, when we're bringing these messages out, and just look out and say, what do you think about it? Brother so-and-so, you've heard a few minutes here, these, these are my thoughts. Where are you at on it? Let's talk about it. Sister so-and-so? Oh, sisters can't speak up nonsense. We're in an age of fullness. We're in an age when I want to know what the people are thinking. And if you do that a few times, you might get them off their phones. You might get them where they don't jump up and go to the bathroom so much. Everybody's, well, how come they won't listen anymore? And they always got their phones out, and they're going to the bathroom, and they're doing this and that. If you start asking questions about what you're preaching, and get them engaged in it, they're going to say, whoa, he may call on me any second, I need to be listening. And it, in listening, it gets them into thinking about what you're talking about, and communicating it in a way that it brings the whole body into it. These are the things that I think about all the time, and I, I maybe, you know, I'm, I'm just one man. But I know that the Scripture said that Paul and the apostles, that they went into the synagogues and spoke, and talked to the people, and talked to them about Jesus Christ. Now, some of the Pharisees didn't like that. They jailed some of them, they killed some of them, they cut the heads off some of them, and everything else. But they were communicating. And in communicating, it really filled up a great, great, great age. It's a new world, it's a new day. This is a beginning. This is an Alpha. This is, this is a section of time where eternity drops in, and, and sets up a whole new cycle, and begins to fill in an abstract script. Let's figure out ways to fill it in. This is just my little session. The rapture. The rapture is you and me coming over here, coming through all those trumpets and seals, and thunders and plagues, and coming to the other side, and having all of that within us. And now how do we walk, how do we make it work? Give me your thoughts. I won't, I'll do a little more exercising most of the time, but I had this on my mind. And so I exercise, and I, I, you know, do a lot of leg exercises, and pulling them up, and stretching them out. And it just helps me at nighttime to be able to sleep. And I'm normally in here, and I'm listening to different men and prophets, and all sorts of things, and different philosophers, and all kinds of science. And in listening to it, it, as I do my exercises, I get to thinking about things like this. And I thought, well, maybe if I'd just done a little bit of this, people may like it. And if they like it, we'll keep doing it. And if nobody pays any attention to it, or just says, Brother Parnell, it's too abstract, we don't get anything out of it, you know, then I won't do it. But I love you, and I really love this word, this message, you as a bride and wife of Jesus Christ. And I'll let you go. And some of my sessions are longer, some of them are shorter, some of them are somebody else altogether, as far as studying on things. So, love bless, next time.